You have to get him on the court because you're good. You are a good rat. You might want to talk about, yes, you called me one per. So when you sat there and lied about the...
The camera can see you.
The camera can see you. The camera can see you.
Six-four loves you.
Seven-four loves you too. God bless you. God bless you.
Yeah, you gotta know what's going on.
God bless you.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can we get two rounds of five minutes? That's ample enough time to actually just discuss the wording we've got there. Um, the last five minutes, not one part of that was a discussion, um, what Mr. Futter had asked for. Um, so we can just raise time or we can discuss the issues.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Ms. Worthing, are you lying or are you missing the point? I said it might take more than twenty minutes. So it was one part of it that answered the new this motion and you missed that.
That's improper. Go ahead, Ms. Worthing.
While you have your amen choir and you just raised it on all of us, none of it means anything. Sure, go ahead.
Members of the audience, please, and please be...
Point of order. Point of order.
What's your point?
First of all, she should not be referring to, which is very rude and disrespectful in last form, referring to the people who are here as the amen choir. That's, excuse me, that's, I'm in a court of court. She should not be calling them the amen choir. That's inappropriate. You need to correct her on that. That's name calling. They may not all be religious. You don't know.
I will agree with that. So please refrain from calling our constituents the amen choir.
Well, the cats are passed.
Oh.
Are you raising the match back to...
Um...
What's your point?
Uh, this gentleman registered out of the race.
Please, members of the...
I'm not going to raise me to those of the audience.
With members of the audience, we'll be called to order. Please, control yourself. This is a business meeting. I need that very much.
I need that very much. You got to silence the...
There's a member on the floor to remove which audience member?
Uh, the one who's being... The one who is behind the...
Okay. Come afterwards. But she has made a motion and I will ask for a second. Is there support?
Support.
Point of order, ma'am.
We will discuss this after the discussion.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes, but, Mr. May.
That's improper. That's improper. You take, I'm not going to make a motion. I'm in the middle of a point of order, ma'am chair. Can you handle that?
Stay in the point of order.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Ma'am chair. She didn't tell me to raise a knee. She didn't listen to the last two meetings. Now here she didn't tell me to raise a knee. First of all, she lied on me and said I had nothing to say about privacy. And now she checking the public. And I, I'm on a point of order about...
Point of order.
I'm on a motion on the floor.
Mr. May.
I'm going to appeal your decision to take that motion when it's going on the floor. And I so do that. That's what's proper. I'm going to appeal your decision to ask for...
I have a point of order that supersedes what you had on the matter.
It ain't superseding that. Point of order.
What's your point, Mr. Worthing?
Regardless of, rather than you appeal, my colleague in the first ward is, um, appealing your decision or pardon, a point of order until you acknowledge him and give him the floor. He do not have the right to take over the floor even though he called point of order. All of your information. And as a chairperson, you owe it to us to keep some order in here for all of us.
Point of order, ma'am chair. A point of order takes the floor, Mr. May.
Uh, Mr. Worthing, Mr. May, it does not.
Point of order takes the floor. It's a privilege motion.
You must be recognized in order to take the floor.
No, a point of order. You stop everything and that takes the floor. So you have the... I'm going to appeal to your decision.
When you hear people yelling out, it is from every single one of us going from one to nine to bring order. So I'm not going to demonize the councilwoman in the ninth ward for putting a motion on the floor to bring order. Because this is what we're here to be, orderly. And those that are not orderly, according to this early person subsection, it says that if you persist to be this orderly, you shall be removed. So hopefully we can enforce their rule tonight so we can get out of here in a timely fashion.
Request for information.
What's your request, Mr. May?
Did we enforce, enforce it against y'all?
Mr. May, that is incorrect. Go ahead, Dr. Ms. Worthing. Ms. Worthing, excuse me.
Thank you. Um, those two will be the last person to tell somebody how they should chair a meeting or maintain conduct. I mean, give me a break because y'all have allowed people, the person in the ninth ward has hit someone. Is she here in the audience tonight? And I hope she speaks on it. She is here. She committed a smoking offense.
What is this, Ms. Worthing?
What's your point? No, she's here. Oh, she's here.
Ms. Worthing, you must wait for me to recognize you.
This has nothing to do with the matter at hand. And it's only to cause chaos. Can you please move?
That is improper. Point of order gives her a board.
That wasn't proper point of order.
No, it's not. Because I'm tired of these. You be taking it off. It's improper. She spoke to the amen choir. I'm talking about the amen choir.
Ms. Worthing, your discussion was improper because we are talking about this appeal. Please state your main to the appeal.
Judy, I'm not going to go here with you for that because you know what? You're doing what you have to do when this person is here, was in this amen choir. And when they speak to snitching, you didn't stop. Liddell Lewis, that was last week when she's mentioned snitching. You allow whatever you want, but I'm going to say this because the rules don't apply. We got five people here who rubber stamp anything. We got four hundred million that's going someplace. We're shooting out of the way.
According to rubber's rules, our councilwoman in the sixth ward can't speak to laws in the...
Well, you did, so, um, warn her. She spoke to Mr. May snitching and he was trying to snitch. So he was trying to say that what we should charge him to be ordered. You can't even tell me about that when you run... Talk to me about...
Point of order, your point? She did not cease talking after I made my point of order.
I did not obtain the floor, Ms. Worthing, after I gave her...
I had the floor. She called.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Worthing.
So when we talk about this, you didn't check her for snitching. She wanted to tell us, she wanted to charge, tell us what we should do, speaking of how we should be a council. She can't tell me how to be a council. You know why? Because she got a thousand people that signed signatures for her. And she still... Who got recalls and they want to come here and be disruptive to everyone else. This stuff has got to stop. It's got to stop that she talks to them alone twice as if it's real. Just making up rules that don't even exist. Don't even exist. And according to the council rules, you have to... They don't even exist. They're not even in the book. Not even in the book. And according to her, the people who can only call people to order are those who are in leadership. Julie herself, councilwoman, uh, Judy Priestley, um, Councilman Murphy and the councilperson. And not talk to the amen choir. I want him thrown out. This mess is ridiculous. These landlords want to talk about getting to their property. They just want to have every property that they have, they paying the fees. They want to make sure they get the tenants in. And y'all talking about stuff that don't even matter. I'm tired. She ain't been here. When she wasn't here, it was somewhat better. Somewhat. I wish she weren't here for that. And hopefully she got a clean bill of health. She's going to quit lying on me and the residents. I'm going to defend the residents until every last word I got. She's wrong.
More importantly, I want to touch on... I want to touch on racist comments by how in the ninth ward, we want to... She wants to point out the racist comment of the first ward. Uh, is she just saying that people in Norfolk don't deserve pineapple? Like they only deserve food that she don't deserve? Do I hear that?
Yeah.
Wow.
She's the doctor.
So, so when we want to talk about gaslighting and making racial comments. Point of order.
What's your point?
I'm trying, I have the floor. She's over here.
Point of order. I'm sorry, I'll let you do, rule on his...
I, I, I'm sorry, I did not hear her say anything.
Hold on, because I'm on a point of order.
What's your point?
The councilman, councilwoman even Worthing just stated the monkey comment. Come, we got black people up here. And she comes like a monkey. Well, don't, don't, she, that's like saying ghetto again. She is just allowed to continue to escalate. You have the person that she hit still sitting in the audience and still here. She said monkey. She said...
Request for information.
Request for information. So the monkey comment was directed towards me. So, all right, so it's not saying monkey inappropriate?
That's an inappropriate situation.
I think that's...
I think that's inappropriate.
I think that's... But let's go ahead and be fair.
To call us to order. We started this meeting at five twelve. Five twelve, it's nine oh four. And we're still going through these resolutions. We could have been done, but we forgot to call in a kill and silly motions that we did not have to be engaged in. And you refuse to give Mr. May the warning. You refuse to give everybody a warning. We need to have order. If someone is out of order, you call them to order. That's your job as chair. And when you do not do that, it is our job as a body to make sure that we have order here. This man just told you that he's going to continue to call me ignorant. And he does not care what you have to say, Madam Chair. This is what he told you as, as the person that's supposed to be. Over this meeting, making sure this meeting is flowing smoothly, making sure people are following these rules. That's your job. And when you don't do your job, we are forced to step up and put motions on the floor so we can have order. He's been out of order all night using privileged motions. He's been saying point of order, request for information. He had over twenty of those combined, using them in an improper way. And the only thing you've been saying is go ahead, Mr. May. So if you just want to let people go ahead, how about all of us get loose? So we all think, oh, we had members in the audience that yelling out and no one saying anything? We need some order here and if not, we can just call it a early Christmas and go home. If we're not going to do the right thing. This is a bad thing. Okay, are we, and you hear the audience? You're not once calling the order? You hear them telling me to go home? Did you hear that? According to our rules, they are supposed to do that. So we can just do what we like. Let everybody just throw these rules out the window and have the hours they fill.
Madam Chair.
Mr. May.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Ms. Lewis, what you saying and doing to me is a little... I mean, you've been trying all night. Uh, Madam Chair, can you remove him? You mad because she won't do what she has her to do for people? I would be embarrassed during the Christmas season, the season Jesus was born by Mary to act like you toward me. Yes. This is the season to be jolly. But what you doing is bringing the season to make us hollering.
So through you, Madam Chair?
The Easter calendar. You're not this guy.
Ms. May.
That soup dog over here. Taking somebody out of...
What's your point?
That was no big deal that I was on the phone, got a picture of somebody up that truck. But us and they time a work change. So if she want to know all of my specific phone calls, then I'm ready to tell her. I send these to quick that...
Request for information.
What's your request?
According to our council rules, we can't yell a phone call.
Point of order, ma'am.
What's your point?
A request for information is to the speaker. She's the speaker. She asking herself a question.
Mr. May, what's your point?
Where's the statement?
Point of order.
We can't talk on our phones.
It does, it is not in the rules, but it is, I could hear them. I'm the one who brought it up because I could hear someone speaking on their phone.
But does it state in the council...
No, it does not state.
It does not state in the council.
What's your point?
My colleague in the first ward referred to me as ignorant.
Mr. May, please refrain from calling your fellow councilpeople.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Councilperson in the first ward said he will not refrain from calling his colleagues ignorant.
Point of order, ma'am.
Mr. May, I must rule on this point of order. And yes, you are correct. Ms., Ms., um, Dr. Lewis, because the councilmen, the council rules state that we are supposed to show respect to our fellow councilmembers as well as to administration. Please refrain from calling people ignorant, stupid, or any other name that is derogatory.
Point of order, ma'am.
What is your point?
The council rules respect your copy. My colleague didn't respect me when I'm taking care of my business. And I'm not going, I'm not referring to my colleagues as ignorant. I refer to her as ignorant. And you and nobody else gonna stop me from saying right back something to that position. And I'm going to ask you, Madam Chair. Imagine you lied and said I did twenty illegal points of orders. That's a lie to me. I'm going to might run back the tape and count them, JJ. I don't like people like you who do that. And you want it. So now you hoping that Ms. Priestley both know against her own ruling. But you talking about you been here all night. This might turn out to be a waste of time that you wasting. I don't feel... And who said it? Eva?
Oh, yeah.
That's who you rolling with? She's so busy picking that back at me. I think that is picking. So I'm not referring to my colleagues as ignorant. I'm referring to her picking at me as ignorant.
Although it is not... Mr. May, although it is not against council rules to be on your phone during council meeting, it is, it is appropriate, it is inappropriate to be, to do so. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
No, Madam Chair. This again, to be too much. So I would like to put a motion on the floor to give Mr. May his first warning.
There's motion on the floor to give Mr. May his first warning. Is there any...
You all have seen.
It's been moved and properly sent in to give Mr. May's a first warning.
No.
Worthing?
No.
Yes.
Hold on. I was...
That's okay. Point of order. Mr. May, rest of the group wants to change his vote.
Yes. Yes, excuse me, I want to change my vote to yes.
Point of order.
What's your point?
The point of order is our colleague in the first ward can't be yelling out and calling colleagues stupid. That's a personal attack.
That is correct. Mr. May, please refrain from calling your colleagues, colleagues. Um, I'm ruling on this point of order, then I'll call on yours. I, um, I'm, please refrain from calling your colleagues names. Thank you. What's your point?
My point of order is I can say if I don't believe somebody to have a high intelligence level.
Mr. May, that is not appropriate. That is not appropriate according to our council rules. Go ahead, Madam Worthing, what is the rule?
It's seven thirty already. And we yet to get into the finance committee. We still got special affairs and city councilmen to go. All I want to do is get the meeting moving forward. It ain't nothing to shy or to outshine somebody or whatever. I just want to...
Request for information.
What is your request?
You the one phoning, but he was motioning to me proper, didn't he?
Yeah.
Make a proper request, Madam Worthing.
Madam Chair, point of order.
What's your point?
This, Mr. May have abused privileged motions all night without warning.
Did she go, Mr. May? Did she go, say?
Go ahead, Mr. Worthing.
All I'm saying is a motion was put on the floor. I don't have nothing to do with no motion that somebody put on the floor. I didn't second no motion that somebody put on the floor. But this man in the first ward is determined to try to tie me into whatever your interpretation of what you think going on with what my thought frame is. And all I want to do is move the meeting forward.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Why you wave your hand at me like that? I am, I could just be determined to clarify the truth and straighten up what you understand in my mind. I don't know what you understand. And I got a right to do a request for information to you. So I'm going to wave my hand back at you.
Is there a proper vote at this moment?
That's correct.
To the chair.
What's your point?
The point? I retract my point of order.
My thing is, as the chairperson, how long are you going to allow this man to keep cutting us off and use the frivolous motions and, um, points of information and be wearing the floor and talk about stuff that ain't even on? It's your job as chair to keep ordering here. This man is, um, taking over the meeting. And I know we trying to give him some leave, wait a whole night.
Go ahead, Worthing.
It don't make no sense.
I will take it.
I'm asking the chairperson, moving forward, if these frivolous, um, points of information, um, points of order keep being abused, that we can't just say, okay, you're out of order. I don't care what councilperson is. Give them a warning so we can get this meeting moving forward. Because if you don't, they gonna do it all night and we gonna be here on hostage.
Thank you.
I very wanted to be here today, but I'm here.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What's your point, Mr. May?
Why you and him dialogue and then you not saying for an order? Y'all just talking to each other like that. He got the floor. Normally, we wait to amend this fact time and then we wait to get the floor. Why you doing that?
Mr. Worthing?
Yep, I'm down.
Any other discussion?
Now, this is the president of the Flint City Council. You better get your stuff together. I stopped running down that list. We gonna be here till Christmas about your character, lack of integrity. And it's up to you, please.
Please state your main, your main to the...
You better talk to them. You better talk to them. Because I'm not, I'm about that. Believe that, please state your main. This is ridiculous.
You just irks me un- un- unterribly. But if you don't irk me enough to not to go get them signatures, that's the good thing. We got them. And we got enough till when May seventh come, you gonna be history. I don't know what about forehead over there in that wig. You know, one day you butch and the other day you Shaka Khan.
But this is not...
No. I, I guess, I guess, this is my time, this is my time to speak. This is my time to speak.
It's not your time to insult council members.
I, did I saw, did I saw, I saw you...
Point of order. Point of order.
No, she can't.
You don't... Point of order.
What is your point of order?
You better watch your tone.
What is your point of order? What is it?
I'm getting ready to tell. Please do.
You cannot talk to the president.
Yes, I can, on the chair. And she's insulting our members.
Don't touch me with the chair.
Uh, no, I think I've done my job.
Two ways.
No, not. She can say what she need to say.
Is there an actual point of order?
Yes. Yes, it is. I just say it.
Okay, dinner. Ms. Beverly Dix, please refrain from insulting council members. Say what you need to say.
I'm saying it. And big girl words. What are you, little girl? What are you, little girl?
Point of order.
She take her back and...
Point of order.
Her back, B.
What is your point of order?
Whoa.
Put it back.
You cannot address...
Okay, that's...
I'm not, I'm not...
Okay, your point is denied.
I'm not, I'm...
Point of order. Point of order.
It is denied.
Point of order. You ruined the order. You can, excuse me, point of order. You have no responsibility to...
And I, my ruling is that it's denied. Ms. Dix, please continue.
She's out of control. Point of order.
Um, that was your first warning.
I'm not ruling on jail.
So, um, this...
You... No, no. You want to... You want to...
She's not... She's not... She's not...
Yeah. You don't want to... You don't want to... You don't want to... You don't want to... My shit. It's tight. So... I'm not... I'm... I'm... No, it's... I'm staying. You want to... You want to... You want to... You want to... You are, you are the damn Louis Warner, B. Now you're right. You... Tell your lord. Now, you... You didn't... You didn't... You didn't... You didn't... You didn't... You... Yeah.
You're good. You are a good rat. You might want to talk about, yes, you called me one per. So when you sat there and lied about the...
The camera can see you.
The camera can see you.
The camera can see you. Six-four loves you.
Seven-four loves you too. God bless you. God bless you.
Yeah, you gotta know what's going on.
God bless you.
Go first.
Bye, bullshit.
Go first.
Bye, bullshit. I'm not even talking. You... Shut up. You... Why you... I'm not even talking. Listen, liar.
No.
Liar. Listen. Liar. Liar.
I done read them up. I done read them up, boy. Boy.
Try to park in the parking lot tonight. That punish like we are kids.
No, never ask me anything. But you have to get what's happening to leave you, okay?
Yeah, get some order in this place. Get some order in this place. Get some order in this place. All y'all out of order. Bye, bye, bye. Well, this meeting is a learn from that course. Mr. May, that's out of order. That's out of order.
Ain't embarrassed to be in the city of Flint, homicide man.
You understand, I had your back with single... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure. You just make sure you get that 300,000 in your pocket, okay? Make sure you get back with this whole mind, you will. Oh, but don't trip. You don't get your business back, all right? You said they gonna get their 300,000 and their 50,000. And I mean, the sum's up. Residents have got a pool, a furnace, a shingle, or nothing.
They got 40 million dollars on the table.
But they broke more. Let the news report that.
Man, look, we got police here supposed to ride. Police stepping up council person, who goes persons. I'd like to acknowledge that the police is down. Judy Priestley's person is in the lobby tonight. I don't know if she's coming to a hostile council environment. That mean we will not have the council meeting.